Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for coming to tonight's candidate forum for the Palo Alto City Council. My name is Adam Dawes, and I am the publisher of the Palo Alto Weekly and CEO of the Embarcadero Media Foundation. I want to begin by thanking our candidates for joining us tonight for what I hope will be a thoughtful and informative session about the future of Palo Alto and the different directions these candidates believe the city should go in. The Palo Alto Weekly has worked for over 40 years to serve this city with quality journalism that provides facts and context to the major issues affecting civic life. Helping residents make an informed decision at the ballot box is one of the most important things we do as an organization. This doesn't just happen on its own. I can assure you that our team has been working extremely hard for the past few months reporting and compiling information into our voter guide. Please check it out at Palo Alto Online or in this week's Palo Alto Weekly. I hope you find it helpful in making a decision this November. Let me now hand over to our moderators, Sarah Wright, the editor for the Palo Alto Weekly, and Janati Shaner, our senior staff writer.
Thank you so much for being here. Good evening to the candidates and to the audience. This election season, we have nine candidates competing for four seats on the city council. We've asked all of them to answer a pre-submitted question as a way of introducing themselves. So I'll give a little overview of what that question will be. We have a version for the two candidates with prior elective service, Greer Stone and Pat Burt. That question will be, "Name a specific council vote from over the last two years that you now regret or disagree with, and explain how and why you, if re-elected, would vote differently." For the candidates who are not returning, the question is, "Name a specific council decision from over the last two years that you disagree with, and explain how and why you, if elected, would have voted differently." You each will have one minute to answer. And the candidates will be asked to respond in alphabetical order. So to start off, candidate Burt.
So the one, there are probably more than I can think of, but the one that comes most to mind is when we had the issue of police encryption. And our former chief had gone forward with, I think, what he believed was a requirement to meet a state mandate to encrypt our police communications. A number of us, former councilmember Du Bois and myself, and Mayor Stone, all opposed it. But when it came forward, we were convinced that encryption was a requirement, and we couldn't go around it. Mayor Stone was the dissenter and opposed that. And ultimately, our current chief was able to eliminate the encryption. So I wish I had voted the other way at the time.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, candidates, just so you're aware, the yellow indicates you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red is the end of the question. Next is candidate Kazi.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you to the Weekly for hosting us. Disclaimer, I do have to wear glasses under bright lights. It's a medical condition. I promise I'll still have good answers. So in 2023, we had something really amazing happen. We had 56 people apply to our city boards and commissions. Since 2020, we had been working toward equity and inclusion goals, including, are we reaching out to underrepresented communities to apply to our boards and commissions? Yes. Are candidates applying? Yes. But are councilmembers appointing underrepresented voices to our boards and commissions? And that's not happening consistently. With such a large applicant pool last year, I think there was a big missed opportunity to make the process more accessible for newer candidates. I know one candidate who didn't realize that she would have to interview in front of the entire council, and that can be really intimidating. And as we talk about evaluating candidates holistically, whether you're navigating city emergency resources in a heat wave or affordable housing waitlist, those are valuable lived experiences that we need on our commissions, and that's something that I'm looking to is look at that lived experience we need on our commissions to shape effective policy.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Cribs.
Thank you. Good morning, or good evening, everybody. So my discussion comes with a, started with a good decision that turned into a bad decision. The good decision was to refer a bunch of skaters to the Park and Recreation Commission so that they could work with the city to build a new skate park and move forward into the future. We have a very historic skate park in Greer Park. And so the staff worked with the group of skaters and brought in a designer and figured out what the cost would be, which was about $750,000, to fix and do a new skate park. Unfortunately, that stalled, and there was no staff in the city. And here's where the bad decision came in. There was no staff because the budget had been cut, and we were missing management staff and community services. So the good news is that staff is back, and now the skaters are moving forward. Unfortunately, they were sophomores in high school, and now they're sophomores at University of Colorado. So they will get a new skate park.
Thank you.
It's a longer story and a more complicated story, so sorry not to be able to talk about it all.
Thank you. Next is candidate Etskowitz.
I'm Henry Etskowitz. I'm a senior advocate, and I'm running to represent seniors and renters especially. But before I start, I want to think of the worst decisions of the city council, I'd like to give a shout-out to my wife, Alice Zhou. Today is the 20th anniversary of our meeting in Palo Alto after an internet collegiship. Alice. So apart from the decision to take .33 acres out of El Camino Park, I think the worst decision is the Ventura Plan. To not honor the Chinese community's wish to build a museum on that historic site. That should be changed. I invite the Sobrato Organization, which has overall been a good corporate citizen, to pivot and give that Frye Site to the Chinese community for a museum which now is in household exhibits, and use the rest of the site for artists' housing, lofts, like in Berkeley at the old Shell Site.
Thank you.
And the rest of it, a park for the neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Next up is candidate Lu.
Thank you. I'll talk about the housing element. That's our state mandated plan, which calls for zoning for 6,000 new homes. This is why the city is getting divisive, new, and unfortunate builder's renovation projects. And the buck ultimately stops at both city council and the planning commission. So we have to own and learn from four drafts over two years, and ultimately, our slow process to actually get housing done. Until the last draft, we literally ignored clear feedback from the state. Our programs missed basic requirements like numerical goals and timelines. I was one of the few people to point this out on the dais, but ultimately, I did vote to advance our housing plans based on staff's strong recommendation. So that's the first lesson. We have to move forward with common sense and not legal technicalities. The second regret is that we can't actually defer our obligations to residents. The moment we decide to do things like plant 2,000 housing units along San Antonio Road, which has few resources and few amenities, we need to start immediately planning for parks and transportation.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Rektal.
Okay. First, I should give some kudos to the incumbents. I think that overall, they've done a very good job. There's been other councils where this would be a much easier question, but the one thing that pops to my mind is the banning of e-bikes in the Baylands. I mean, there certainly are serious environmental issues, there's certainly tranquility issues, but there's also an equity issue. And there's certain seniors and disabled who that's the only way they can access the Baylands. And so there really are kind of two types of people who use e-bikes. Those who want to go really fast and those that want to just go. And we should be able to take the people who want to go fast, route them on the paved commute roads along East Bay Shore, and then the rest of the trails have a really strict speed limit, enforce it strictly, and that would allow people to at least, everybody to access the Baylands.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Stone.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Greer Stone. I'm mayor of Palo Alto, and I'm finishing up my first term on the Palo Alto City Council. Really honored to be able to be here with all of you tonight. I do want to express my appreciation to the Palo Alto Weekly for organizing this opportunity for all of you to get to know us better and our vision for Palo Alto's future. You know, I've learned a lot during my first term on council, and experience is really critical in this role. But one area that I really wish that I had addressed sooner is the role consultants play in their recommendations. Consultants can provide important expertise when we lack it in-house, which saves taxpayers' money. However, how we manage them does need improvement. I've been frustrated by consultants who push a particular project or policy when their job really should be to provide objective analysis to help council make informed decisions. So going forward, I wanted to ensure that our contracts require consultants to remain neutral and provide unbiased information.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Suma.
Thank you very much, everybody, and welcome here tonight. So I wanted to also talk about the North Ventura area plan. And I was part of that working group for two years, and I think that the plan is mediocre, and the process wasn't very good, and that's on everybody. But I think what the council could have done at the last minute, and I think they tried, but they didn't take it all the way for me, was to improve the parking situation that staff was recommending in the area plan. That area is within a half mile of a fixed transit or three train stations, so you can only have, you can't require any parking. But I think it's noteworthy that the actual law that the state imposed upon us has two carve-outs, one for ADA and EVSE parking, and another one that's a general hardship carve-out that you have to make, a city has to get a special waiver for. But I think when we don't use every opportunity that is built into some of these bills that are imposed upon us, we lose.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Templeton.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Carrie Templeton. I'm running for council. Very lovely to be here, and thank you for hosting this forum. There are two decisions that I want to bring up. One of them, I think we're going to have a chance to talk about later, so I'm not going to get into too much detail here, but I feel the pain of the council having to recommend that we go further with a project that's going to take a lot of property, and I'm thinking about the underpass on Charleston and Meadow. I think we'll get into that later. The other one I want to talk about is the decision that happened a few years prior but has had impact two years ago, and that was the decision not to add the protected bike lanes in Meadow, and a young man was hit and severely injured because we didn't have those kind of infrastructure on Meadow.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say a few words about our ground rules. We're going to start with a few big-picture questions that we're going to ask for three candidates for each question. They're sort of longer and more involved, and we'll have 90-second answers for those. I also want to mention that throughout the debate and between these big-picture questions, we're going to be tossing curveballs because it's baseball season. So each candidate at some point in the debate is going to get one pointed question directed specifically at them. And also, as part of our rules, and you guys have done this before with us, everybody will have one opportunity to challenge. So if you're not asked a question that you wish you were asked, you could use that opportunity, and you'll have a minute to speak. You could use that in the first round, or later on, when we have quicker questions, you could use your challenge to get a minute of speaking time. And if there's any confusion, just let me know. And so we're going to go to our first big question for three candidates, and it's going to be for Henry Etskowitz, Pat Burt, and Keith Rektal. So for all my time covering Palo Alto, I've been hearing a lot of kind of sentiments from residents that South Palo Alto doesn't always get the love that North Palo Alto does. Just some illustrative examples, North Palo Alto has two downtowns, it has the police station, more fire stations, more trees. When we're talking about housing plan, a lot of it is going towards south, and, you know, all the recent zoning changes are densifying South Palo Alto sites, and the new El Camino Zone is literally just south of Page Mill. So my question is, what are the most important things that Palo Alto could do to improve equity between north and south and ensure that residents in all neighborhoods could enjoy a similarly high quality of life? So you have 90 seconds to answer, and it's going to be Henry Etskowitz, Pat Burt, and Keith Rektal. Thank you.
Drop the idea of building housing along San Antonio. Make that our lungs. Plant trees. Make Palo Alto have an urban forest like Rio de Janeiro planted in the mid-19th century. Move the housing to the places where there is already the infrastructure for it. Stanford Shopping Center, the garages. Build Greenly High. The trade-off is between a few places high and the rest of the places left low or unbuilt. That's the way we must go. Vancouver is the model I learnt at the last talk. Few places high, the rest of it green. How do we do that? We must partner with Stanford. Stanford has the land, so that reduces the cost of housing because you don't have to buy the land, which is very expensive here. And then we must partner with the venture capital community because they also have the resources. Right now, they want to build in Solano County on ranch lands. Bring them back home to Silicon Valley and build on the declining shopping centers in the peninsula, and especially here where they reside as their home on Sand Hill Road. Start here first. A collaborative between the university, the venture capital industry, and the city. That's what I call a civic triple helix. That's my key concept as an academic. University, industry, government relations.
Thank you, Henry. Your time is up, but I have a quick follow-up question. What if Stanford says no? And what are you going to do for the 2,000 units of housing that's planned for San Antonio as far as the housing element?
It's in Stanford's interest. I got into this race because Stanford tried to push me and my fellow seniors out of Oak Creek Apartments because they were desperate for housing for their post-docs. We wanted to keep our intergenerational community. It's in their interest to say yes and work with. We must secure the town gown antagonism and work together closely to solve our problems.
Okay, so we're hoping Stanford will say yes because it's in their best interest.
We're not hopeful. We know they will. It's in their interest.
Okay.
We just have to work on and talk with them, not fight with them all the time.
Thank you, Henry. We're going to throw our first curveball. Commissioner Lu.
Commissioner Lu, as a planning commissioner, you've been more than willing than just about all of your colleagues to loosen parking requirements, a subject that came up both in discussions about Ventura and about retail reforms. You at one point said, quote, "I think if a developer wants to build a project with very little or no parking, I think that's a really exciting opportunity and exciting experiment." We want to ask you, what would you say to residents who need their cars to get to work, who are unable to bike because of disabilities, who live in areas where public transit is not consistent or not reliable, or who simply prefer to drive around and don't want to be part of this experiment?
We are not forcing anything upon anyone. We are not going to take away people's cars or make driving fundamentally more difficult. We are a car-dominated city, and that's not going to change anytime soon. And we need to make things walkable and bikeable, but we need to keep in mind that the city must move and the city must work. So let me talk about that specific quote and that specific comment about reducing parking requirements. That's a state law in reference, that's in reference to state law, which only applies to a half-mile of high-quality transit stops, so basically our Caltrain stations. And that does, like Commissioner Suma said, have important carve-outs for disabled and accessible parking spaces and for electric vehicle parking spaces. I think we do need to have a broader vision, though, about what our downtowns and urban areas could actually be. In cities like Tempe, Arizona even, like a car-dominated community, they have built car-free neighborhoods. In other cities in California, people have actually built student housing that doesn't have any parking. We are a college town. It does make sense, in some cases, in some projects, to really minimize the amount of parking we have, and I think that will make us, in many cases, also a stronger community, for example, with student housing adjacent to Calav or things like that.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to do another curveball to Commissioner Suma. As a planning commissioner, you have a history of casting dissenting votes on housing projects and housing policies that have been supported by most, in many cases, all of your planning commission colleagues. I'll give you some examples. You were the sole dissenter in a vote to increase zoning density on El Camino Real, to create that car-light housing in El Camino and Page Mill, and to approve housing at 788 San Antonio Road, which was part of a broader plan to densify that zone. So earlier this year, you also voted against advancing the housing for educators at 3265 El Camino Real, a project that three of your other commissioners who are seated here supported. So you say housing is one of your top priorities. So given these votes, why should voters believe you?
So because I've also voted for a lot of housing projects. And when housing projects were not good for the people that were going to be living in them and hurt the people and businesses next door, I also tried to modify them and make them better projects. With regards to the teacher housing project that was, that you referred to on El Camino, that project, if you looked at the teacher's salary schedule, was not going to help teachers in PAUSD. And the developer admitted that. He met with three of the planning commissioners after that meeting, and we talked to him more about it. And I understand from Mayor Stone that that project is coming back and a much improved project. It was going to be too expensive for teachers. It didn't work. I mean, you could just look at the salary schedule, which is years of education versus years of working for PAUSD, and was not a savings for anyone. And if you looked two blocks away in the Ventura neighborhood, you could rent a much bigger apartment for a lot less money with parking spots and, you know, like a gym and swimming pool. So it wasn't the right project. I'm really excited to hear that it's going to come back and that it's improved. So I can't address, I don't have time to talk about every single project, but I did vote for a project on San Antonio, 800 San Antonio. I recently voted for a project that's being built near Greer Park because it was 100% legal. Now, when, especially before state, oh, sorry, I got the red card.
Okay. Appreciate your answer. We're going to go back to our big-picture question because we have two candidates who have to answer about improving equity between north and south. And so I believe Pat Burt is up.
Yes. So there are a number of aspects to this. In, we have three community centers in Palo Alto, one in North Palo Alto, two in South Palo Alto. We have three what are called district parks, the larger parks, one in North Palo Alto, two in South Palo Alto. But among our community centers in South Palo Alto, we have one that is the new main library at Mitchell and Community Center, a beautiful community center, and one that's very dilapidated at Coverley. As you may have seen, yesterday, we were able to announce a deal on Coverley where we have an option to purchase seven, the additional seven acres of all, we would now own all the building land, and it's going to give the city, finally, the potential to redevelop that as appropriate. We're going to be needing to come to the voters in two years for your support on that because it will be very expensive to do so, but it's a really exciting solution to what people had for 25 years dreamed about, and we closed that agreement yesterday. I'll also say that I strongly support more of the housing in our two downtown areas. And shifting that, I think it's ideal location, but not, I don't support this exciting experiment of zero parking requirements. I do support reduced parking and transit use and biking, but not externalizing the problems. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Now Commissioner Keith Rektal. And let me know if any of you need me to repeat the question because I know it's been a little while since I went through my spiel. Thank you.
Yeah. No, Coverley is a big improvement. We're looking forward to that. One thing we do not have in South Palo Alto is a swimming pool, and so if that can be incorporated in the Coverley design, that would be great. Right now, we just have the North Palo Alto swimming pool, and then sometimes during the summers, we can use the junior highs. The others, we have no, our east-west bike connections is not as good in South Palo Alto as in North Palo Alto. So particularly having underpasses that go under Almar and under the train tracks to connect east-west. Right now, all the bike traffic comes down through Midtown and has to cross over at Meadow. And when you're concentrating bike traffic for school districts, that's just not a good thing because they all come at the same time and they really clump up together. So having better east-west connections through, all over, but particularly under the train tracks is important. The streetscapes at Midtown are looking a little shabby. We've talked a lot about Calav and also talked about university, but don't forget Midtown. The tree canopy in South Palo Alto with all the rolled curbs is not as good. We really need aggressive outreach to get private planting along the sidewalks. There's room for it. We just have to get outreach to improve that. And then finally, the last would be parkland down in San Antonio and also parkland up in the research park. Both of those are areas that we know we're going to have housing going forward, and we have to proactively plan for that.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to our second big question. This question is directed at candidates Lu, Templeton, and Kazi. Unlike neighboring cities, including Mountain View and Menlo Park, Palo Alto sometimes can be seen as having a pretty woeful history when it comes to creating area plans. In its most recent one, Ventura, it was approved with little fanfare after many stakeholders, most in fact, dropped out of the process, having failed to reach a consensus. Past efforts on East Meadow Circle and California Avenue have also faltered. The city's only success story is SOFA, which happened more than 20 years ago. Given that the next council will be pursuing new plans in San Antonio and in the downtown area, what do you think the city can do to make sure that these efforts have outcomes that the community can really embrace? We'll start with candidate Lu.
Firstly, we have to really learn from, honestly, the failures of the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. That plan took just about seven years, and by the end, most of our key stakeholders were really burned out. And also, a lot of the really important decisions on how to handle things on El Camino or the Frye Site were already separately negotiated and separately decided on. I think little fanfare is a generous way to put it. So we have to firstly, move faster and move with strong community support in a way that doesn't burn out the residents. We need to set actual deadlines and milestones. We have to always move forward and not revisit past decisions in the middle of our area plans or potentially even in the final moments of our area plan approvals. We need to also move faster than just the area planning process. In parts like San Antonio, we need an actual deadline to acquire land for a park or to actually start planning for transit connections or cycling or walking connections. Other cities have done this. We can too. We need a sense of urgency for area planning.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Templeton.
Thank you. It's a very interesting question. I started my public service in the city with an assignment to the NV cap, and we took, I think, what, six months or something before we had our first meeting, and by then, I was on the planning commission. So I didn't get to be involved very much with that, but had a chance to work with Commissioner Suma and Commissioner Rektal on that. It was an interesting process, but I think the challenge is it was very, very large compared to SOFA. SOFA was a great project that Carol Holman and Pat Burt worked on, and it was a different-sized project with fewer stakeholders. And if we're going to take something as ambitious as, I think it's 60 acres for the NV cap, then we need to understand that it's going to be different when we work with that many different stakeholders, with a lot of different property owners. And so it was frustrating and unfortunate, the way we tried to collaborate because we had a lot of neighbors in there and we had people that were leaders in the community, and we also had the stakeholders of the property owners. And it was, it was very frustrating because the property owners wanted to make a profit, and the people who lived in the vicinity of the Frye Site really wanted to have something that would be a benefit to them. If we're going to develop it, we need to make sure it's beneficial to the community nearby. And that's one of the things I'm, parts of my platform that I'm running on, is we want to make sure that as we head into this inevitable development that we've agreed to as a city, that we do it in such a way that we benefit the residents now and the residents in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Kazi.
Thank you. So I think this is a balance of both getting community feedback but also setting deadlines. You can never make every- You can never make everyone give everyone exactly what they want, but you can give them the opportunity to feel heard. And I'll give the example from my professional life. Right now, in the city of San Mateo, I'm overseeing some street infrastructure improvements where El Camino Real is being repaved. They have a bus lane going in on El Camino Real. There's potentially protected bike lanes going on with El Camino Real. We know a lot of bicyclists, there'll be dense housing. There's a lot of different groups. There's a lot of local businesses being impacted there. So we're making sure all of those conversations, all of that community feedback starts now so we can identify and address the big concerns early. Again, you can't give everyone exactly what they want, but you can set deadlines and make sure that people are heard and engaged with early.
Thank you.
Let's do another curveball. Commissioner Kazi, we'll stay with you for a second. As a regional bike advocate, you've expressed support for adding bike lanes on middlefield roads, similar to what's happened in El Camino in our little questionnaire, which is available in the back for anybody who's curious about positions. And you reportedly favor turning University Avenue into a car-free mall. So some of these proposals are somewhat divisive and have been in the past, as many people value University as a critical thoroughfare between East Palo Alto and Stanford. So would you pursue or abandon these ideas, which may be popular among regional advocates, even if large segments of businesses and residents in these areas oppose them?
I think in the, again, it's about getting that feedback. And I think with the case of downtown, I live downtown, and I will just say like the number one thing I've heard downtown is that people do want it to be closed to cars again. And I think it is incorporating that in those upcoming plans. I think in terms of middlefield, I will also relate this to our SCAP goals. We need to, in order to meet our SCAP goals, we need to get a lot more people safely walking and biking around the community. Transit is going to look very different in the future. Our roads are going to look very different in the future, and it is our job, again, we can make people feel heard. And the thing about protected bike infrastructure and protective car, protected pedestrian infrastructure is it also makes it safer to drive. It doesn't stop people from getting around in their cars.
How would you address concerns from like retailers around University who are concerned that they'll lose business if there's no car access?
Sure. So again, I'll give the case with El Camino Real. I think that should have been a more proactive discussion because there are 12 businesses on El Camino Real where the exterior parking, it is essential to their businesses, they have necessary deliveries. But there is also 2,000 parking spaces right off of El Camino Real, I think I have that number right, that are largely underutilized. And again, it's, as a city, we haven't been great at identifying where parking is being underutilized and then simply like putting the signage of where that parking is and directing people to it. I think in terms of retail, it is also understanding that when, we generally see numbers-wise, when bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improves, and this is what our economic advisors have said, is that sales go up, retail, the sales go up.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to another curveball question. Let Sarah take it.
Thank you. Our next curveball is for candidate Templeton. In recent forums, you and candidate Lou were both called out for supporting a consultant's recommendation to abolish the city's retail protection ordinance, which requires ground floor retail in commercial areas throughout the city. While California Avenue and University Avenue would not be affected because they have their own zoning restrictions, critics noted that this could hurt areas like Midtown, which are already suffering from loss of retail and where offices would now be allowed to take over those spaces. How would you ensure that areas like Midtown would continue to have neighborhood-serving retail if the retail protection ordinance were repealed?
Thanks. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this in detail. That particular recommendation from staff said that these rules and regulations that are in the retail protection ordinance were, one, duplicative with existing rules, and two, a problem that's been complained about by the retailers themselves, and three, likely unconstitutional. So in case we are not sure why staff was recommending to repeal it, those are the reasons that they provided on their slide. Now, to the question of how do we make sure that those protections would exist, well, if they're duplicative, then repealing it wouldn't have any, wouldn't make a difference. Now, if the staff recommendation was inaccurate, that would be something to understand. I see Nadia is shaking her head over here, but that is exactly what's on the slide, and I can show you a picture later. But, you know, it's, the bottom line is, we want to make sure the protections are there. And if staff is letting us know that the recommendation that they have in their expertise is, is duplicative, it's complained about by the retailers, and it's unconstitutional, I don't know why we would support it. Thank you.
So you had retail owners complain about the retail protection ordinance? I mean, this question specifically about Midtown?
Yeah, that was what the study was about. They were actually, oh, sorry, can't hold it with that hand. The, they were, this was a survey that the staff had done with retailers and potential retailers and trying to understand what is happening and why we're losing so much retail. So that was what we were told. Now, I didn't conduct the survey myself, and I do rely on staff to be able to speak with our retailers. However, what we decided is we didn't like the word repeal and the implications it had, and we rephrased the, the motion so that we could say, let's make the necessary changes, but not repeal it. And I supported that. And I do support retail protections, so thank you.
All right, yeah. The repeal vote didn't carry. It didn't have enough votes, so I don't challenge that. But we'll move on to our, our third and final big question for Greer, Stone, Doria Suma, and Ann Krebs. It's about grade separation and 90 seconds. So for more than a decade, Palo Alto has been planning for grade separations. As you guys all probably know, it's the redesign of the rail corridor so that tracks and roads will not intersect on the same grade. The current priority is Meadow and Charleston, where the city is evaluating a car underpass and a hybrid design, which includes raising tracks and lowering roads. Those options are being studied right now. But I feel like the Churchill, where a partial underpass was chosen as a priority, as the preferred alternative, is no longer as high a priority. So my question to the candidates is, how do you feel about the partial underpass idea on Churchill? And given the high expense, engineering complexities, and construction impacts, do you think the city should still pursue grade separation on Churchill Avenue? So again, we're going to start with Mayor Stone and then go to Commissioner Suma and Commissioner Krebs.
Hey, thanks for the question, Janati. Yeah, well, you know, first, I think the council has made very good progress over the last several years at winnowing down from where we were with about five different alternatives across the different grade separations, now down to really one at Churchill and the two at Meadow and Charleston. For the Churchill crossing specifically, I, I still favor the, the partial underpass because it provide, it continues to be able to keep a critical access point to be able to connect east versus west within Palo Alto. That was one of the kind of key priorities initially identified by our SCAP was to make sure that we are keeping those access points. So that's going to be really important. We also want to be mindful of neighborhoods that are going to be, that would be impacted by shutting off that, that, that crossing there, that now where is that addition, where is that traffic going to spill over? That means we're going to have more traffic along Embar Cadero, more traffic along Oregon Expressway. And with, right, looking at kind of certain expansions in the future at, at Stanford and in other places around the, around the city, we really have to be mindful of those decisions, right? All of these decisions are going to have ripple effects across the community, and that's really key. But also to keep in mind that right now, where we're at, we're only at about 5% of a design engineering at any of these crossings. And so there is still, we forwarded them to 15%, and at that point, when we have that design, we'll be able to make a more informed decision and especially to minimize takings, which is key.
Great. Thank you so much. Now Commissioner Suma, please, same question.
Thank you. So here's where I'm at. Ridership is still really low on Caltrain, so I want to make sure that we need, before we spend all this money and do these really disruptive projects, I think we should know that we still need it. I think what this council has done thus far is good, and I would, I'm anxious to look at the results of the 15% design. I think if Churchill can be addressed through other safety improvements and we don't have to do anything there, I think we should look at whether that's a possibility at the other locations as well. I think that we should be really sure about asking for takings. I generally do not approve of takings of people's property. And I'm looking to really improve the bike pedestrian underpasses, looking to improve it at Cal Ave because that one is kind of scary to use, and looking at having better, more options for safe crossings regardless of what we do with grade separations for bike and pedestrians in South Palo Alto. So just to sum up, I would really like to consider whether we're going to need to do it right now. I, I find the options a little bit underwhelming because they don't solve the problem of the train separating the entire city. So, you know, it doesn't really solve that problem, and if we don't need to do it now, we shouldn't do it. But yes, we should do the safety, additional safety measures at Churchill.
Great. Thank you so much. We're going to go to Commissioner Krebs, and also candidate Eskowitz is going to challenge. So after Commissioner Krebs, we're going to go to you, and you'll have a minute as part of the challenge. But first, we're going to go to Commissioner Krebs for her answer.
Thank you very much, and it's nice to see all of you out here tonight. This is very complicated, and I'm kind of new to this party as a first-time candidate, and I have spent some time trying to figure it out, and I'm not so sure that I figured it out yet. So first of all, I worry about taking people's property, so that's something that I'm considering. Second of all, I worry a lot about the safety of our kids. And I'm just talking about the kids because my kids had to do that, go from Military Way in, in Barron Park, across El Camino, across Alma, across the train tracks to get to JLS Middle School. And so when I think about all of this, I respect the fact that our traffic patterns are changing, that trains are going to add faster commutes, but I'm wondering if we absolutely have commuters to be on those trains. And so for Churchill, I like the partial situation and making sure that the kids can get to school. For the South Palo Alto, it would be terrific if we could do an underpass because it seems simpler to me. But as you can tell, I have a lot of questions and a lot of unanswered in what I'm thinking about, so.
Great, thank you. Now we will give candidate Eskowitz a minute for his challenge.
End Suicide Alley. Put that railroad underground. That's where it belongs, and it's technically feasible. You can put a tunnel through water, mush, and granite. Let's join with our neighbors from San Jose to San Carlos and work together to attract the federal infrastructure funds that are there. And we can do it. All the politicians come to our community to raise money. Vance is coming here next week. We have to use our political clout to ask for what is the most important thing we want, which is to underground the railroad, put a linear park above, bike paths, habitat gardens. There's no need to have these partial crossings. They're not going to solve the problem, as was just pointed out. Let's solve it once and for all. Barth grows underground into San Francisco. Why can't we do the same? New York did it in 1870. Everybody else does it around the world.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next curveball is for Mayor Stone. During COVID, Palo Alto, like other cities, switched to Zoom, making it easier than ever for members of the public to participate in meetings. Even when the council returned to City Hall, it continued to allow Zoom participation for the public. Yet during your mayorship, you introduced numerous policies that went in the other direction, including limiting public comments at the beginning of the meeting to 30 minutes, limiting the duration of comments to one minute if there's more than 10 speakers, and barring people from commenting remotely on items that are not on the agenda. Why did you support these policies, all of which can make it harder for residents to participate in local democracy?
Well, the idea was never to limit public participation, but actually it, but actually to be able to expand it and to be able to expand it in a way that makes the environment safer and more welcoming for all in our community. If many of you recall, our city has been rocked by, throughout the, throughout the years, throughout, throughout this year in particular and in the past, with a series of Zoom bombings. During public comment, due to the First Amendment, there is nothing that I can do to stop somebody from spewing the most disgusting hatred that they want. And we just have to sit there with whatever amount of time that I have allocated for them to tell people within our community that you don't belong here, that I hate you, that you should die, some of just the most disgusting things. And our members of the community had to hear that, meeting after meeting after meeting. And I took a stand to say, no more. We're not going to allow that. If you want to stand and say that hate, then you show up in person and stop being the coward that you are hiding anonymously behind Zoom. So we implemented that policy. There has not been any of that hate speech during our public comment since then because none of these cowards are choosing to show up in City Hall. And I think one of the big reasons for that is I don't believe they're from Palo Alto. I think they're from all around, I think they're from all around the country. And that Zoom has offered a lot of wonderful things, but hate speech is not one of them.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Okay, wow. All right. And we're going to do another, another curveball now for Commissioner Krebs. So yeah, Commissioner Krebs, you're an Olympic athlete who's spent decades volunteering for many different boards. I want to go back to your term as board chair of the United States Table Tennis Association in 2019, where there was significant division among board members about things like the recruitment of the CEO and comments that one board member would say to another. And there was ultimately an investigation by a law firm that criticized the board for modifying the agenda and failing to promptly post minutes. You strongly disputed the report's characterizations, but I wanted to ask you, what would you say to Palo Alto voters to assure them that you would not run into similar governance issues if elected to the city council?
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. That was a very interesting time in the world of table tennis and Table Tennis Board of Directors. I believe the specific incident we're speaking about is the accusation that I manipulated the agenda to protect a fellow board member. And that's just plain old not true. The board member in question had made a comment to a Paralympic athlete about providing a service on a committee and asked if she would be able to serve on the committee because she had a history of absences. That was taken by the Paralympic Committee as, and the Paralympians, as an insult to her disability. That was, in my opinion, and other board members, not meant to be that kind of an insult. So I decided at the following board meeting that I would contact an expert from Denver on disabled, disabilities, who came in and talked about what it was like to be disabled in a lot of different ways. And I put that person on the agenda first and had the vote to then expel the board member afterwards. That was the extent of the manipulation, was changing the agenda during the time on an agenda when it calls for, are there any changes to, or additions to the agenda?
Thank you. I just want to ask a follow-up to that. What are you going to bring forward from that experience if you're elected to this board in terms of board relations and working with your colleagues?
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
Yeah, I apologize. From, based on that experience, what will you bring forward if you're elected to this board in terms of board relations? How do you hope to move forward with your colleagues in a different way?
Well, I think I've, I've learned a lot over the years. I've worked on a lot of different boards, not just table tennis, but a lot of different national boards and local boards. And I believe that I have the ability to get along with people, to listen to people's thoughts and whether they're like mine or different. And I believe I have the ability to seek compromise and go into, to have a discussion.
Thank you. For our next section of this forum, we are going to do a round of questions that will be asked to all candidates. These are kind of a lightning round, so you'll only get 30 seconds. So be quick with your responses. We want to get them all, through all of them promptly, but you will still have your challenge if you'd like more time to respond at the end. The order of your responses will be random, and we specifically chose topics on which candidates have indicated from speaking before and through the survey that we conducted that you disagree. So to begin, our first fast question, remember only 30 seconds. For decades, Palo For decades, Palo Alto development has been governed by a 50-foot height limit for new developments. In recent years, the city has relaxed this limit in sections of neighborhoods, including Ventura, Barron Park, and San Antonio Road, to meet its housing goals. The 50-foot limit was once thought of as sacrosanct, but six of you said yes when asked on your questionnaire whether it's time to abolish it. Why do you support or oppose having a citywide 50-foot height limit for new developments? We'll start with Candidate Lou. 30 seconds.
I support abolishing the height limit and replacing it with something that is reasonable, that allows common building typologies that actually pencil out, that get us more investment, more housing, and more life in our city. We are above 50 feet consistently across the city in many places. We've zoned for above 50 feet in many places. One thing that I really care about is having a consistent, clear, transparent process in making every height change discretionary, you know, whiffs of their variety.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Eskowitz.
50 feet will lead to the eventual Bronxification of Palo Alto, stubby four- and five-story buildings across the landscape. Go greenly high in a very few places and leave the rest of Palo Alto unbuilt. Put more land into green space, an urban forest on San Antonio lands going towards 101. That's the way for the future. That's, that's the trade-off you have to make. Go greenly high in a very few places, like the shopping center, the research park.
Thank you.
And landmark the rest.
Thank you so much. Next is Candidate Suma.
So we have gone above the 50-foot height limit in various places, and I think it's appropriate. I think we have to be especially careful where zones abut about impacts from high buildings. And I think, you know, I think we can all envision taller building where Molly Stone's is than 35 feet, which is too, probably too low for, for the needs of today. But we don't envision a 17-story building there. It just doesn't fit in. So as long as we are careful about impacts on neighbors and.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Next is Candidate Rektal.
Yeah, the 50-foot was a one-size-fits-all, and we know that heights, one-size does not fit all. There are some areas that we can certainly go much higher than 50 feet, other areas where 50 feet is much too tall. So I agree that we should abolish it, but we should not necessarily greenlight, increase the height everywhere. But the reason we're doing this is for housing, to increase the housing production. And so I, I would support raising the height for housing, not necessarily for office.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Cribs.
Yes, I would support raising the height limit from 50 feet to a little bit higher in special circumstances, but not every place.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Templeton.
Yeah, I think we've covered it pretty well here. I agree with Commissioner Rektal and Commissioner Suma. This is not a situation where we can paint with a broad brush across every, every zone in the city. We have to decide where we want to have higher limits and how high those limits will be, probably not 50-foot, but probably not 17 stories either. So we need to intentionally design our city zoning so that people know where it's appropriate according to the people of Palo Alto to build higher and where it's not.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Burt.
Yes, context is critical. And so we've already increased the height limit on El Camino in this particular, on the west side of El Camino, up against the Stanford Research Park and Palo Alto Square. We increased it all the way to 85 feet, but we stepped back those upper stories too so that it doesn't feel like a wall of 85 feet. We did increase the Stanford Hospitals to well over that. There are other areas where we really have to look at context. Certainly, a 17-story builder's remedy at Molly Stone's is out of place.
Next is Candidate Kazi.
I think I agree with the sentiment that everybody has echoed. My focus is on building taller in near our downtowns and California Avenue to support our local businesses, to meet our climate goals, and to make sure that our teachers, our families, our seniors can all comfortably live in our community.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Stone.
Yeah, the, the state mandates are definitely going to make us do some things that we might be uncomfortable with or that are, that are new. And when it comes to increasing the height limit, context is absolutely going to, is going to matter. And ensuring that higher, taller buildings are in areas where they are not going to interrupt the daylight plane of, of neighboring residential buildings and using taller buildings as an incentive and a tool for developers to put more affordable units in like we did with the El Camino Real Focus area.
Thank you so much, Mayor Stone. And also, thank you so much to all the candidates for being so good about keeping to the time limit. We're right on schedule, and thank you, Clay, for keeping them honest with the time. So are we going to throw a curveball now at Commissioner Keith Rektal? So last fall, when this, when the city was revising its housing element, you defended a proposal to add the 2,000 units on San Antonio Road by, by quoting the bank robber Willie Sutton, because that's where the money is, as he said. So you basically said, we're putting all that stuff there because that's where the land is. One of your colleagues, Commissioner Templeton, pointed out that there's land all over Palo Alto, north and south, and certainly downtown has plenty of small buildings as well. So how would you respond to criticism that this type of thinking exemplifies bias against South Palo Alto when it comes to planning for tall, dense housing?
One important thing for housing is you want to put housing close to the jobs. And you have the biggest job driver in the, the North Bay has been the Bay Shore area over by Google. And if you go down to the area, and I mentioned earlier that you, you drive around there, it just does not look like a great place for housing. But you look across the freeway and you see Google building after Google building after Google building, and that's, you realize it's a great place for housing. And so the fact that we have a very feasible place for housing and you also have jobs very nearby, that makes it a very attractive site. And the fact that it's in South Palo Alto is irrelevant, it's close to the jobs.
But it's far from transit and parks and, there's some retail, but not as much as like downtown or Cal Avenue.
Yeah, correct. And that's, that's where planning and zoning comes in, in that we have to zone, and so if we put housing in, we really want ground floor retail, we really want to have the bike lanes, so make sure the setbacks are sufficient for bike lanes, you really want to work with VTA to have mass transit, those things are planable, and so we can work around that.
Great, thank you.
Our next curveball is for Candidate Eskowitz. Building off of this, the city council and the greater community had spent years exploring the creation of a housing plan. It was finally approved by the state in August and included building more than 2,000 dwellings in the San Antonio area. You've discussed a couple times tonight and in the past that even though you did not take part in this effort, you're now proposing that the city abandon it so that San Antonio can become an urban forest. How would you accomplish this? And how would you make sure that in doing so, Palo Alto would not reneg on this commitment to the state to build the 2,000 dwellings and lose control over its own land use decisions?
Build the 2,000 dwellings. Build the 6,000, the 10,000. Build them high, build them on the shopping center lands at the research park. Make Palo Alto greener. The San Antonio lands should be an urban forest like Rio de Janeiro has. I see an Arbor Day when the children will come out from the schools and plant seedlings along there. I see them reciting that Joyce Kilmer poem, "Make Palo Alto Greener." That should be our motto, and we can do it by building high in a very few places and taking back the other lands for forests and parklands like they have in Brazil.
Candidate Eskowitz, the question was less about the what and more about the how, because I understand your vision, but would you be prepared to tell the state of California that you'd like the housing element to be null and void because you oppose like one of the main policies in it for building housing?
The, the essence of politics is to do the right thing with power and clout behind it. I believe in Palo Alto, we have that clout. We can get things done in Washington if we want to. We have the political capital, and the same in Sacramento. So I think Governor Newsom would agree, if this is explained to him logically, that the better idea is an urban forest. I'm sure he would love to come and plant the first tree with the schoolchildren from one of our schools. So yes, I think California would be amenable.
I appreciate your certainty. Okay, we're going to go to our next fast question. Again, this is for all the candidates, random order. So, yeah, 30-second answers, sorry. So there's a significant split among council members when it comes to rent stabilization, according to our position sheet. Five of you supporting policies that go beyond state limits and four opposing them. So for supporters, what specific rent stabilization policies would you favor? And for opponents, what steps, if any, would you take short of rent stabilization to support the more than 40% of Palo Alto's population who are renters? So we're going to start with Commissioner Cribs.
So first of all, I, I do not believe in rent control because I think it hasn't worked in San Francisco. I've seen the excesses and I've seen the unfairness of it. I think that it's important to have good policies that support renters so that they're not worried all the time about their rents raising, being raised too much, too often, and that their, their units can be fixed up and cared for and repaired if, if necessary. And I also.
Thank you. Do you want to just give us 10 seconds to let us know if there's any policies to support tenants that you would support short of rent control or rent stabilization? Sorry, you already had a challenge, but we want to.
Sorry, could you say that again?
No, absolutely. Yeah, like my question was if you oppose rent control, which is fine, you do, but are there any policies to, to support tenants that you would support short of rent control? Like are there any other tenant-related policies that you would support?
So the, the certain policies that the city has that are on the books now and the renters, whatever we're calling it, the renters review or the renters, I'm not having the word for it right now, so that we can have appropriate data for renters to understand what they want as well.
Great, thank you. And Candidate Eskowitz, you used your challenge already, but you are up next, so please, the floor is yours for 30 seconds.
I'm a senior and a renter. I live in Oak Creek, where the policy until Stanford took over was that if you lived there for 20 years, your rent was capped. When Stanford took over, Ben and Rue became to ask for that same policy. They were turned down. So bring back the private sector, a car policy of capping rents, but confined to seniors whose income is below that 25% household level, so that we're not subsidizing our millionaires, which we have in Oak Creek. But we can spread that to the rest of Palo Alto.
Thank you so much. We will now go to Commissioner George Lou with the same question about rent stabilization.
Thank you. And just for everyone's context, we already have a state law on the books that limits rent increases to 10% or inflation plus 5%, whichever is lower. And I think that's a great starting point. That's anti-rent gouging, and it's an important tool in our toolkit. And it's a really important thing to study as the market stabilizes post-COVID and we see really where the need is and how we potentially improve this in the future, but I'm not committed to improving it right now. We do need other strong rent protections as soon as we can get them. We can do rent protections that are not burn some to landlords, like multiple months of notice for rent increases for predictability.
Thank you so much. Now we're going to go to Commissioner Templeton with the same question about rent stabilization.
Yes, I answered yes here because what we already have on the book is, is far beyond what the state requires. So I don't, I don't feel the need to change it. That's not the question. The question was, do you support anything more than what the state requires? And I support what our current ordinance is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now Councilmember Pat Burt.
Well, first, I've supported the additional renter protection measures that we put in place in recent years, preventing wrongful termination, deposit restrictions, and other measures that have really gone a long ways to addressing the most egregious actions against renters that were, have really been experienced in recent years. I am open to something more restrictive than the state increase of 10% per year, which is still gouging. I can tell you that 5% per year is a large rent increase and a very profitable one for, for developers.
Now we're going to go to Commissioner Katie Kazi.
Thank you. I, there's many different types of rent stabilization, and we would have to, you know, we have new rental registry data coming in. We're going to have to, if we were to pursue rent stabilization, we would have to study what is the right fit for our city. I think of cities like Mountain View that do have rent stabilization that is stricter than the states, and that hasn't stopped them from building. So really, the temperature is, is this going to delay us building? Is this going to delay us maintaining units?
Great, thank you. Commissioner Suma.
So I voted no on this, but I did not feel good about that because this is not, to me, a yes-no question, as Candidate Kazi just said. You really have to find the right, right course and path for your, each city if you're going to improve rent stabilization. So I'm actually open to discussing it, but I had to pick yes or no. So I also supported all the renter protections that the PTC teed up for the city council and that the city council passed last year.
Great, thank you so much, Commissioner Suma. Appreciate it. And Mayor Stone.
Thank you. Well, as a renter myself, and my wife and I were both public school teachers, we rent here in Palo Alto. We, we know the difficulty of being able to afford to live in Palo Alto and the fear every year when, when the lease comes up and the rent increase goes up significantly. I'm glad to hear all of the support for the protections that council has already passed. It has made a meaningful difference, let me tell you, but there is more to be done. I agree with Councilmember Burt, anti-rent gouging down to 5% is still a significant amount, but would be helpful.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Commissioner Rektal.
Yeah, in general, rent control is not a good thing, and that really can discourage the construction of new apartments, and so we have to take that into account. If we were seeing gouging, then I may be open to doing that, but right now we aren't seeing gouging, so I would not support that. I do support the other rental protections, and I also would support a limit, we advance notice if you want to raise the rent above a certain limit.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you to all candidates for answering what is a very complicated question within 30 seconds. We're going to go to our final curveball for Councilmember Pat Burt. So when you ran four years ago, you criticized the city manager and city staff for taking actions like reducing the police auditor's purview and imposing a citywide curfew during the George Floyd demonstrations. You basically said that the council needs more oversight over staff-level decisions like this. Yet during your time, city manager Ed Chikada made a significant policy change when he closed City Hall to the public, initially during COVID, but then it's remained this way since, and public is allowed by appointment. So you, like most candidates, indicated in a questionnaire that you oppose this policy. So the question is, why did you let this happen, and why haven't you and your colleagues done anything about it?
Well, actually, as you stated, the policy occurred before I came into office, and we inherited it. It was enacted because of an increased concern over public safety and security of public employees in a city hall that had less habitation as a result of what was then a lot of hybrid work, were having a greater return to work of our workers. And there are other ways for us to address this. I do support this, and we've had discussions as a council. There are a couple of different options on the table, and one is to be able to use technology in the elevators so that if there are certain floors that don't have the, the staffing that would allow the public to readily go there, to restrict access only to those floors. And I think we're going to see movement in that regard, as well as customer interfaced right in the lobby as well. So I, I think that it is something that we're, as a council, going to be acting on, and the city manager has heard it clearly from the council and the public that this needs to be addressed to a greater degree.
Thank you so much. This is our last fast question, 30 seconds each. It pertains to sustainability and climate change. Palo Alto has had an ambitious goal of reducing its greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2030 compared to the 1990 baseline. Many in the environmental community believe that to achieve this goal, the city should phase out the use of natural gas and set a deadline for shutting off the utility. Why do you support or oppose such a deadline? We'll start with Candidate Rektal.
I do not, sorry. I do not support a mandatory shut-off. I'm worried about multiple things, one of them being that the. One of them being that the, the ability for people to pay is very important and we still haven't figured out exactly how to properly incentivize people across the income spectrum. The other thing is when you have a hard...
Thank you. Sorry. Next up is candidate Eskowitz.
50 years ago, I was a photovoltaics entrepreneur here in California and we had the plan to build solar cells less expensively, but the Reagan administration cut that off. Put solar cells on all the rooftops of multifamily dwellings, shopping centers, and Stanford. Only 7% of Stanford buildings have rooftop photovoltaics. Also, it can be done in windows. Contact the Anderson Company in Portland, Oregon. We can do much better. Sustainability is my academic top...
Thank you so much. Can you, can we just circle back for 10 seconds about opposing or supporting the deadline on that one?
The deadline for natural gas, natural gas must be replaced. All fossil fuels must go. Don't restart nuclear.
Thank you.
Solar is the way to go. It can take care of all our energy needs.
Thank you. Next is candidate Cribs.
Yeah, I do, I do support a mandatory deadline for everybody and I think we should be really careful of the expense that it's going to be for some people in this community.
Thank you. Next is candidate Burt.
As perhaps our council's strongest champion for our climate protection plan, I've been criticized by some of these members of our activist community for believing that we are not ready to set a deadline for natural gas. We need to first develop really the programs to implement electrification and prove to the community that we can do it cost-effectively and equitably so that everyone can be able to do that and that we have a strengthened reliability plan to assure that the electricity will always be there or nearly always.
Next is candidate Stone.
Stone?
Yes.
Well, the real issue here is that no one can sunset natural gas because the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals just ruled last year or earlier this year that the Berkeley decision to shut off natural gas was preempted by federal law. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal is the most liberal court of appeal in the entire country. Supreme Court is not going to overturn that and Congress is not going to change that law. So whatever anyone says about sunsetting natural gas, there's nothing we can do.
Next is candidate Suma.
Thank you. I'll align my comments with Mayor Stone's. I think that the Ninth Circuit Court ruling has limited what we can do, but I also just don't support a hard deadline. It seems like the dates are just plucked out of the air. They would have to be based on some realistic data for doing it. And I think the cost of electrification is significant enough to make it unreasonable to force on people. And we also really need to work on upgrading our own electric grid. And so, no, I do not support the deadline.
Thank you. Candidate Cozy.
Thank you. So I do support the code revisions that we have that are essentially in place of a ban. Ideally, I would like us to set a sunset date of 2040 if it's legally possible because that gives us enough time to, one of the things I'm most looking forward to is using the data from our rental registry to identify what is the needs of multifamily homes so we can do this equitably. But setting that date helps with that equity aspect. It helps large property owners figure out there is a deadline to this.
Thank you. Candidate Lou.
This is really important for our climate and it should be the next phase after our 2030 goals. We need to carefully plan and find a date that actually works pragmatically, but a date should come. We have already planned, we've already committed to plans that quote-unquote virtually eliminate gas use in single-family homes. As we actually advance that goal, which we have committed to as unanimously as a city council, well, among the many programs, we could see a cost spiral. And if we don't plan gracefully for a predictable timeline, it will affect the most disadvantaged of us.
Thank you. Candidate Templeton.
Yes, thank you for the question. I think that we are limited in terms of how and when we can discontinue the utility and how the Ninth Circuit's decision may or may not be litigated further. But assuming it stays in place, we have other mechanisms we can use to discourage the use of natural gas, such as what kind of appliances are available to backfill. And I believe that Councilmember Vinker is working on ideas like that with the Air Quality Control Board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Templeton. And thanks again to all the candidates. The good news is the hardest part of the debate is over. We've done fastballs, curveballs, softballs. Guess we're going to have to do, yeah, we're going to do softballs next. It's your closing statement time, so you will each have a minute to basically tell the voters why they should vote for you. And we're going to go reverse alphabetical order, basically from this end of the table to another. So Commissioner Templeton, do your thing.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the chance to talk with everybody in the room and on the video about the ideas that we have and we're facing as a city and just want to thank you for watching. My name is Carrie Templeton. You can find more about me at carryforcouncil.com. And my issues are around street safety and vibrant community and making sure that we have more green space as we build out. We want to make sure that people are enjoying living here and have a good community vibe in all the neighborhoods that we'll be adding. And that means, that means we need to get to know each other better. So this is a great opportunity to get to know each other and really appreciate all the other candidates as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Suma.
Hi. So I'm Doria Suma. I have lived in Palo Alto for 38 years and the last 17 I've spent on appointed boards and commissions, working for the people of Palo Alto. So I'm termed out now on planning commission at the end of this year and I would really like to continue to serve this community. We have a lot of challenges ahead with all these state laws and having to grow the community by a little over 6,000 units. And I think it's really important to get somebody who has the experience and commitment and integrity on the council to do that. And I think I've proven that by all the years that I've worked to help people in this community. I think it's really important how we do this exactly. And I think it's really important when we speak about climate change and the environment that we remember that electrification is great, but that's not the only thing we should be thinking about. We should also be thinking about biodiversity and nature and saving our open spaces. We really need to grow our tree canopy in the city and we need to grow our parks, especially with new population.
Thank you, Commissioner Suma. Mayor Stone.
Well, thank you again, everybody, for coming out tonight. Yeah, I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish over the last four years together. And yet, I'm acutely aware of the challenges that continue to lie ahead, to be able to meet our housing mandates and to ensure affordability in this community in order to continue to, to be able to continue to make gains towards our 80-by-30 goals, to be able to better connect Palo Altons and create more events and opportunities to engage you with one another or with city government and really to continue working on youth mental health and well-being to ensure that our community can remain safe and healthy for the young people here. But a lot of this is going to be very challenging. And as Daily Post mentioned last week in their editorial, sorry to mention the Post, you can't just wave a magic wand and solve our great problems. And their quote of me was that Greer Stone became the voice of social justice on the council and an effective advocate for more housing. I'm looking forward to continuing to advocate for you. My website's greerstone.com. Thank you. I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Keith Rektal.
I mean, the biggest challenge we have going forward is the 6,000 units of our housing mandate. And that's, that's a big number. And if we do it right, we can add vitality to the city. But if we do it wrong, we can make projects that are around our neck for the rest of our lives, right? Bad projects can last for a really long time. And that's why I'm running, is that we have to worry about livability. Livability for the new residents, to have the same quality of life amenities like parks and bike lanes as we enjoy. But also, we have to take into account existing residents and how this new housing will affect them. And that's also a very important part. And so we really have to work on livability. And if we do this wrong, we can really hurt the city.
Thank you so much. Commissioner George Lou.
Thank you. I grew up coming to Palo Alto. I came here every weekend for Chinese school. I went to Stanford where Palo Alto was in my backyard. I had my first job at a startup in Palo Alto and I owned my first home here with my partner, Natalie. So Palo Alto has given me so much. I have a deep appreciation for the city, for its communities, for what this community, what the people in the room contribute. I will move the needle on housing affordability, retail vibrancy, and safe streets for all. I'm endorsed by eight former mayors, 18 current and former council and school board members, and I'm one of three candidates endorsed by the Santa Clara Democratic Party. Amazing people have confidence that I can be effective on day one. And as you've seen tonight, I can bring nuance and pragmatism to the key problems facing our city. I'd be honored to have your vote. Please talk to me afterwards or learn more on my website or other materials. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Candidate Eskowitz.
The Post has called me the aspirational candidate, implying that my ideas are not practical, yet every one of them has been implemented elsewhere. The urban forest in Rio de Janeiro, the Underground Railroad, Park Avenue in New York, and I could go on and on. I have position papers behind each of my ideas, which I need donations to distribute to get the word out about what we can do to make Palo Alto a better place to live. Let's start with Proposition D, that the current council voted unanimously to take .3 acres away from El Camino Park. Let's vote that down. And let's vote out the members of council who voted for it. And that's all the members of council voted unanimously in favor of this abomination. Ask them why they did that. Why won't they take it back at least?
Thank you so much. We will now, we'll go to Katie Cozy next. I know it's not exactly alphabetical, but yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. My name is Katie Cozy. I'm a lifelong Palo Alto resident and a proud graduate of Aloney, JLS, and Pally. I currently serve on the city's Human Relations Commission, making sure city policymaking is fair and equal. And then professionally, I work with city governments on the peninsula on their street infrastructure, making sure repairs happen quickly and that streets are safe. I'm running after working hands-on with our seniors and families in our local housing nonprofits. And I'm running to make sure that this is a community where everyone can thrive. I'm endorsed by over 200 elected officials, community leaders, and neighbors like you, including the Santa Clara County Democratic Party and the League of Conservation Voters.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cribs.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Ann Cribs and I am running for city council. And I have always loved Palo Alto, just like most of the people in this room. I see the future as full of both challenges. We've talked about housing. We've talked about climate change. We've talked about renting control, but I see it full of opportunities as well. I think as a community, we have the opportunity to come together, work together with Stanford and our school district and all the great people who live here. I'm so happy to get up in the morning and say, I am a Palo Alto resident. I would love to serve on your council. And my website is cribsforcouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. I've long been driven by a real deep commitment for our community, not by political ambition. And I believe that I can really continue to offer my experience, my vision, and my track record of results. In the last few years, we've been able to make incredible progress on affordable housing and our housing element, restoration of services that were drastically cut, oversight of our, greater oversight of our staff, and real progress on our climate change. I think that we do need balanced approaches and pragmatic approaches, but I don't believe that the builder's remedy and support for that is pragmatic or nuanced. I don't think elimination of all parking requirements within a half mile of Caltrain is nuanced or pragmatic. And I think that elimination of our retail protection ordinance rather than refining it is not pragmatic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the candidates. I'm going to hand it off to Adam briefly to talk a little bit about local journalism. But before that, I want to thank all of you for being here, for answering our questions, to all of you, community members, for your attendance, to our partners at MidPen Media and for their work, not only filming this, but for the future posting of this for those who are not able to attend in person. We will post it online. And don't forget, Election Day is November 5th. We welcome you to visit our website at paloaltoonline.com for results and any other information about the election. And now I'll hand it off to Adam to close.
Thank you very much, Sarah and Janati, for a wonderful set of questions that I think were very illuminating for where all these candidates stand. I do have one final message. Local news in this country is in a critical condition. Since 2004, over 2,500 newspapers have closed. That is a closure of more than two newspapers a week for over 20 years. We are not immune to the conditions that are leading to this failure nationwide. So if you value tonight's session and the rest of our election coverage, if you value all the journalism we do the other 11 months of the year, and if you believe in the importance, in the, in this important resource for this community, I cannot urge you more strongly to become a member and support us. If you're already a member and there's more you can do to donate, we would very much welcome that you do that. If you're, if you, there's more information about donating at the exit as well as becoming a member. And I'm always happy to talk to anybody that would like to learn more about our plans in the future. Thank you all for coming and we look forward to election results on November 5th. Thank you.